Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our July 15th Board Meeting. To get things started, if you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Public comment on the agenda? We don't have public comment. Ms. Alfred, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Please, shot, please, not.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to go on to Mr. Wrestler for a presentation with technology.
So in kind of our ongoing series of presentations to the Board on different areas of our district, we were excited to have Mr. Wrestler present to you all on technology tonight. So he is double duty. He is recording this session and he is live in presentation with tech. Tim is extraordinary. I don't know what we would do without Tim Wrestler. In fact, sometimes in the middle of the night, when I'm a little worried, I just think, what would we do without Tim Wrestler? So we are so grateful for all that you do, Tim, and look forward to your presentation this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Manik. And thank you for scheduling our presentation for July. I am not a great speaker at all, please bear with me, but we'll give a shot here.
You're great.
So preparing for this presentation, I thought it back to basics type of thing. Technology department, kind of a refresher maybe for some, and maybe some new stuff for others. But definitely some changes that have happened in the last few years that I think talking about the basics of the technology department would be a good start here for this presentation. So what I'd like to start with tonight is the structure of the technology department. We'll talk about our internal BGCS personnel and how that's changed in the last couple of years. We'll talk about our MSP, our Managed Service Provider, and then we'll get into the Hoop Watt and wire power setup that way and how that benefits BGCS. Next, we'll talk briefly about some of the technology that we use. I'm just going to scratch the surface on the software we use, but I want to talk about the hardware, both in the data center, because that's been a recent change, and then also our hardware endpoints. We had some changes within the last year that I'm proud of, honestly. And then finally, like I said, talk a little bit about the software. Then I'd like to revisit our one-to-one program, give details about that, and then talk about, again, some changes that we made here in the recent years for sustainability. And then we'll talk about student safety and how we monitor and protect our kids. And then finally, I'd like to discuss cybersecurity and advancements and updates we've done in the last year to really increase our cybersecurity posture. So let's talk about the tech department. The department is comprised of myself, the Director of Technology, and my home base is Hornet Park. If you've never been over in Hornet Park, there's what I call the data center inside Hornet Park, and my office is there. That's my home base. And so in addition to my director duties, I also cover that building, the Hornet Parks. Technology demands are not that great as compared to other buildings, so I'm able to cover that building as well. In addition to myself, we have three technology support positions. We have a technician stationed at South Grove. We have a technician that bounces between Central and Middle School, and then we have a technician stationed at the high school. This is one change in the past couple of years where we used to utilize outsourced onsite techs from Five Star. Two years ago, we started the process to bring our techs in-house, and that was based on a need for some consistency, some more efficiencies, dealing with turnover and that sort of thing. It just made more sense to bring those guys in-house and train and retain those people. And it's been a positive move. I'm glad we went that direction. In addition to our techs, we have three integration specialists, or TIS, as we refer to them. And these are our innovation specialists, former teachers come out of the classroom to work with teachers integrating technology. They wear multiple hats in addition to the integration. They do tech coaching with the teachers, support in the classroom of the teachers, and they are tech coordinators in most buildings. And then they typically are one-to-one leads with our student devices. We have a TIS station that covers Hornet Park and South Grove, one that covers their boundary between Central and Middle School, and then we have a third at the high school. And then finally, though this role has changed, I still consider that our state data reporting and SIS specialist part of the department, you know? It's a very important role, especially with our connection, direct connection to the state through our student information system. And so the other part of our department is our managed service provider. So Five Star Technology Solutions have been a longtime partner with Detroit City Schools. We have an agreement with them that provides unlimited engineering support. They support our infrastructure, our network, hardware, network hardware, our servers, our virtualization of our servers. They provide support for our Google. When we get into those higher level issues, they deal with our backups, which is you'll discover is critical with our cybersecurity posture, and even more. And then additionally, we recently engaged and added to our agreement a cybersecurity consulting, basically rider, where Five Star is now adding additional services related to cybersecurity, including an incident assessment, which is basically just a snapshot of where we are today with our cybersecurity, but it also gives us a pathway to improve that and the steps that we need to take to move forward. Incident response planning, which I'll talk about here in a little bit, gives us a playbook, step-by-step steps that we have to take when, when, and if a cyber incident or error occur. This and a couple of other things. Many benefits of having Five Star is our MSP, cost fixed budgeting. But another reason we typically don't think about, but I wanted to mention tonight, is most schools have a system admin. You know, that's your Level 2, Level 3 support, those of your higher-end engineer-type skilled, advanced skilled people. With those skills come higher admins, higher pay checks. Those are people typically don't last very long in K-12. They get in, get some experience, and they move on. And so with Five Star, we are able to have multiple engineer-level technicians at, basically at the cost of one sysadmin that you'd have in any other industry. So it still makes sense for us today to partner with Five Star, and so it's been a good relationship. Okay. Next, we'll talk about software, hardware. Few things that we utilize. I have a list there, scale computing in our data center, with a few things that we still have on-premise, which means our servers, things that aren't in the cloud. Last year, we transitioned from VMware to scale computing. Scale is actually a local computer headquarter here in Indianapolis, but they are our virtualization platform. We transitioned from VMware. There was a bit of a merger, buyout, prices skyrocketed. All schools dumped VMware, and then we transitioned to scale computing. And it's been a cost savings. We did that last spring. It's a five-year warranty on our hardware, so we're good to go in our data center. Some of the software we use, Skyward, you can see there, Skyward, you all know, is our student information system. It's also our employee business platform. You may have heard in the news, another vendor, in the last six months, had a security breach and all kinds of headaches for other districts. Luckily, that was not us, but it was just a good reminder of us and the need for continuous improvement of our cybersecurity. And I'll talk again and then about some of the things that we're doing with that. Google Workspace for Education, we are a Google school. We live and breathe in Google, and it's been great. We actually have a Workplace Plus license, which is a paid add-on license that we utilize for additional features, security being a major one. Again, I'll talk here and then about what we can leave with that. And then next, our endpoints. As you can see, we have Windows machines, Apple Chromebooks, iPads. Super proud of the team. We just, here at the end of summer, we will finish our rollout of Windows 11 desktops across the district. Windows 10 is end of life by October. Those will no longer be in service, so we have procured new hardware and updated our desktop software to Windows 11. Super proud of that. From my previous reports, you know that we did a rollout of our teacher devices at the end of the school year. It's been a fairly painless ordeal, super proud of that. Again, we're setting ourselves up for four to five years of success with that new marker. Google Chrome, we have staff Chromebooks, and then also we have staff who use iPads in the classroom, as well as all of our staff at Hornet Park, where those kiddos have iPads, which I'll talk about in a second. So a little bit of, a lot of different hardware types, but each of those devices are based on role, need, and course budget. So now we'll talk about our one-to-one program. K-1 Hornet Park, we have Apple iPads for our littlest kiddos, Corners. We believe that's the best form factor for those kiddos, and that was not just a me decision, that was a shared leadership decision. And we just feel like that's the best device for those kids. Again, we refreshed all of our student iPads in the spring of 2024, so those typically last five, six years, as long as Apple supports them. So again, we're in good shape there. Greats 2 through 12, we are Chromebooks. We have a mix of HP, Dell, and now Lenovo Chromebooks. And you might ask why the different brands. Just has to do with availability during COVID, inventory, price, what was available in our software that we use. Previously, we had a three-year lifecycle. One of the changes we made was to look to get five-plus years out of our Chromebooks, you know, and that's a move for cost savings, but also sustainability. Each year, we have, you know, a loss of devices, breakage, non-return, that sort of thing, and we just need to come up with a better way for sustainability of our programs. One of the ways we are accomplishing this is returning our take-home devices to the classroom. Previously, where students, even down to grade four, would take them home, we have now brought all of our devices back on campus and just staying at, on campus, grades K through eight. So this has helped financially, as well as helped with the issue where devices have become a distraction instead of a tool in the classroom, so where kids didn't bring their device to school, didn't charge it, that sort of thing. So we're adjusting and pivoting. On the screen, you see K-12 Tech. That's another one of our longtime partnerships with our one-to-one. This is the company that provides our warranty. They do our, they provide our parts and do repairs for us as well. They teach our kids, our high school kids, how to repair our devices. We actually do the majority of our repairs in-house. The integration specialist in the high school, Five Stars, has a tech squad group, and that basically is the storefront here in the high school that students can get help with their Chromebook, whether it's a repair or help, general support. And it's been a great program, a real-life support service technology experience for those kiddos. Also on the screen is Canvas, our LMS, or Learning Management System. We've been a longtime user of Canvas. This summer, in fact, was our renewal. And so during that renewal, we took a look at usage and put the price tag that had gotten pretty hard to take. It was our second renewal, and those were at five years each, so we'd been with Canvas for 10 years. And so looking at the usage this summer, we decided, while we want to keep Canvas and give our secondary kids exposure to Canvas, so they'll be exposed to that for those that go on to college, it makes sense for us to not use Canvas in the primary degrees. And so to that, this coming school year, we will introduce Google Classroom to our district, K through eight, no, K through six, sorry. Initially, Google Classroom was not that great. The maturity of the software and functionality since then has dramatically changed, and so I think it's definitely a viable solution for our primary degrees, and it will definitely be a big cost savings. Okay, now I want to talk about our student safety. FERPA, SIPA, COPA, those are all federal laws that we are held to. FERPA is student records. SIPA is harmful online content, and then COPA is personal information collected for our students. Bark is a free resource that we use to detect problems across our Google Workspace, to help protect students and our counselors, monitor those, our principals and counselors. Content Keeper, that is our content filter. Campus, so we filter our student devices, obviously on campus, but also on campus. Google Teacher, that is a classroom management tool. Teachers can use that to control class time tech use. They can guide students to websites. They can shut down student devices. They can watch, make sure that students are on task, that, those sort of things. The next item is Google Admin Investigation Tool. With our Google Plus license that I mentioned earlier, the investigation tool is one of those features that we have, and it's valuable in the range, more range of security logging and insight that we can get from that on, for security events or possible account issues where maybe it's possible, but with that investigation tool, it's extremely, it's more easily accessible. And then finally, Managed Methods, that's the most recent addition to our toolbox. It's a platform that continuously monitors cybersecurity and student safety risks in our district on our Google domain. This is for both staff and students. It provides automated controls to prevent data security breaches, account takeovers, ransomware, phishing attacks, and detect student safety signals. If you've seen my emails about asking me using, let me know if you're out of the country, that's managed methods. Not that I need to know what you're right about, I just need to know if it pops up on my screen and you're signing in Europe, that'll be the information I need, whether to shut down your account or it's really easy. Finally, cybersecurity. So in the past couple of years, we have took a major push to update and improve our cybersecurity posture. This is modernizing our, some of our hardware in the data center, including replacing the aging firewall. What we did was purchase a next-gen firewall last spring. It's firewall, typical firewall functionality, but also modern capabilities of detecting modern threats. The other thing we added last spring was the addition of next-gen antivirus software across our fleet of endpoints. This software is part of a cybersecurity partnership with a vendor that includes 24/7 monitored SOC Security Operations Center, monitoring of our devices and network. Then additionally, other changes that we have made include mandatory multi-factor authentication for all staff on your Google accounts. We made mandatory multi-factor authentication for all admin, business personnel, and desktops. You know, this is in an effort to protect against BDCs or the business email compromise attacks where bad actors will, you know, try to do vendor fraud, false invoice scams, account compromises, or superintendent impersonation, those type of things. So Duo is a multi-factor that we put on the computers. I've irritated the business staff, so I think I'm doing my job over there. We're moving to multi-factor authentication for elevated privileged accounts into our SIS or Skyward, both on the student side and the business side, meaning if you've got access to more privileged information or across the board, then you're going to be required to multi-factor in your account. And that's just another layer of protection. If your account gets compromised, if your password is leaked, multi-factor is another protection to help protect your account. With that partnership, we also are now doing monthly vulnerability scans on our network and also yearly penetration scans. We've started doing ongoing education. Know Before is a program that we are receiving for no charge from the state. It's a training and phishing simulation program that allows us to test our staff just to see if they're, you know, staying alert and diligent about, you know, watching for those bad actors and those phishing, pesky, phishing emails. Also, Safe Schools Training, we are now doing yearly, included in our yearly training, password best practices, and email and messaging safety. Another addition to the cybersecurity consulting agreement that we have with Five Star includes the planning and implementation of a cyber incident response plan. And that's a playbook that's going to give us step-by-step instructions on what we need to do in a crisis situation where, you know, a breach, account takeover, data, also including disaster recovery planning. We've done redundant internet providers. If our internet provider service gets disconnected, we've got redundancy now. We're just always improving and in more than time, so. That's all I got.
I'm getting pretty impressed with myself.
If anybody has general questions, then I'll answer. If you want to talk more specific, you know, I'd love to go offline and talk about those things, any questions anyone has.
You can see why we are so appreciative of all that Mr. Wrestler does for our organization. It has been very exciting and comforting to see the work that's been done over the last couple of years, particularly related to cyber, as we are being faced with more and more threats. So, Tim, you've just been extraordinary. Thank you for keeping our students safe, and thanks for keeping our corporation safe. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
He's the best.
All right, on to Personnel and Operations with Mr. Garmin.
Before I get started on my updates, just requesting approval, Board approval of the submitted Personnel Report for July. And in addition to that, we have an administrator handbook, classified handbook, and transportation handbook for your consideration for approval. And you might have noticed in the transportation handbook, the other two that you saw red and green indicating things that were struck and things that were added. Transportation handbook was really completely renewed. It is much more comprehensive. I think the old one was about maybe six or seven pages. This one is like in excess of 40. So it has a very, it's very comprehensive now, and it needed to be done. So that's why you don't see the red and green. In subsequent years, when we ask for reapproval each year, we will add that, Misty and I will, so that you know what those changes are. As far as current openings, I listed those there. I will report happily that we have made some real progress since this was submitted last Friday. We have accepted offers for the business position at the high school. We have accepted offer for the special education teacher at Central and the fifth-grade teacher, a paraprofessional at Hornet Park, first-grade teacher at Hornet Park, and the media center specialist. So in addition to that, I'm in the process of onboarding two bus drivers and a bus monitor. So we've had an incredibly successful few days since that was submitted to you. We are in the final stages of onboarding through the Department of Defense, our new JRTC instructor, our assistant instructor. He has submitted all the paperwork that he needs to submit. We've submitted all of ours, and so now it's just a waiting game with the Department of Defense, so hopefully that will come through soon. We're still very hopeful to have that individual in place for the start of the school year. And I did put in there just recent resignations that present a significant challenge, but our principals have done a great job, as you know, as I just said there, that we've been able to fill those positions with quality staff really pretty quickly, so that is real positive. Transportation, we did receive one of our new 78-passenger buses. It was ordered about a year ago, a little over a year ago. That has been cleared inspection, is ready to start the 2025-26 school year, and we anticipate a new special needs bus in August, so we're making some progress with getting new buses. We do have an area in the transportation parking lot, just because of the constant wear, you know, the buses are heavy. We have an area that's deteriorating in the asphalt surface that we're going to need to get addressed. It is crumbling, so that's going to need, something we're going to need to get addressed here soon. School safety, the IDOE published its list of required safety trainings. Tim mentioned that. He works with Steph on that a little with the technology side of it, but Chad Mann and Steph kind of take care of that, and they've given us some reduction in the number of trainings and also some additional flexibility, so that was nice. And just the challenge with that is really just tracking all of it, making sure that all of our new staff, get the trainings pushed out to them. Steph does a great job with that, so. She's smiling, so. She does a wonderful job making sure everybody has that. It's really important that they do, because we need to make sure that everybody's on board with all of our safety policies, procedures, protocols, that they are trained quickly so that we don't have any gaps in student safety. Food service, I thought this was significant. I wanted just to share with you our year-to-date net profit. Last year, our net profit year-to-date was $112,141. We are at $336,000 plus, so that is a significant increase in our net profit. So give a lot of credit to Clara and her team for just working with us to scrutinize every expenditure, to make sure that we get the best price for everything, and also just some innovative ways that they are, you know, serving high-quality food at a reduced price. We expect a significant improvement in that profit margin, I think, as we have closed campus, so students will be eating at the high school now, so that will also, I think, increase that. Current challenge, we have some aging infrastructure in our kitchens. An example is Hornet Park has a warmer that the Department of Health has indicated we need to get replaced, and you're talking, you know, $35,000. has indicated we need to get replaced and you're talking, you know, thirty-five thousand dollars every time, seems like we have a piece of equipment that goes down that needs to be replaced. So just, uh, those increased profit margins are really, really important to help us maintain those kitchens. And from grounds and facilities, um, we are making great progress on our roof replacements. The middle school is done. The high school is underway. Uh, the boiler and domestic, uh, hot water project at the middle school is almost done. We just have to do a little bit of work with the, um, the, uh, technology piece of that, getting the software so that it can be, it can run at the efficiency that it needs to run at. And we had to work with PSI on that. As you guys know, there's a, they have some, um, proprietary stuff over their, their programming. So, uh, we worked with them and another company that Commercial Service had that was, uh, they use an awful lot that is a much more economically, um, advantageous to us to use. And so they're, they're working on that right now to get that installed. Everything's going to be up and running, should be for the start of school. Brett has led that project, Crouch, and has done a great job. And then lastly, um, just a lot of our parking lots, to kind of piggyback off the transportation parking lot, we have a lot of parking lots, as you might notice, that have, uh, potholes and, and some crumbling, uh, areas that we need to get addressed. Currently, the pricing that we're getting for, um, just resurfacing our asphalt parking lots is really, really high. Dale and I have been shocked at what we are getting back in, in the bids. Uh, so we have kind of pivoted to being able to just patch what we can at the moment, uh, try to buy some time because really some of the parking lots are, you know, you're talking a parking lot that, you know, like quarter of a million dollars. Uh, so we're just surprised at the, a little bit of the price, but we will figure out solutions to that and, uh, and make it so that, um, they're functional and hopefully we'll get a few more years and maybe be in a different position here in three to five years to do some more extensive work with those.
Can I get a motion to approve the employment recommendations as listed? Beth and Janice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Can I get a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five six, or twenty twenty-six ECA positions?
I'll make said motion.
Tara?
I'll second.
Beth, all those in favor?
Aye.
And as long as everybody's okay with it, um, I'd like to put the handbooks together. Can we get a motion to approve the administrators' classified transportation and student handbooks for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six? Janice on all?
I'll second.
Tara on all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? And Dr. Hammack?
Thank you. So just a couple of, of asks of you all this evening. First off, Julie, uh, included in your packet, information on the budget adoption process. So every time that we get together in July, we just ask for your permission to advertise the budget and then we are time-bound by statutory provisions that we will walk through every month until we get to the place of our formal, uh, budget adoption. Julie, did you want to say anything more about that?
Um, I talked to the DLGF today and the AVs are coming in on August one, or very close to that, hopefully.
Yeah.
Um, it's a bit of a process this year with the new, uh, changes. So, once we get those, uh, we'll know better how to budget, but the, the, um, the budget hearing will be in September meeting and then the budget adoption is in October and then we'll get back our seventeen eighty-two in December or early January, likewise. So, you have any questions? I'm winging it right now, along with everybody else.
Yeah.
I move we, um, advertise the twenty twenty-six budget.
I'll second. Beth and Brian, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
An action that we asked the board every July is to approve our twenty-five, twenty-six administrator contract renewals. Um, and the contracts that are being recommended for renewal were submitted to the board in advance of the meeting. Um, no changes, uh, from what you all had reviewed in our last session. Just ask for your approval of the same.
Can I get a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six administrative contract renewals? Beth? April M? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay.
Next up, just asking the board, um, to authorize, uh, language changes, uh, in what we're referring to as amendments, to the educational products and services agreement that would be established between Beech Grove City Schools and K-12 Virtual. And also to authorize our school council, Michelle Cooper, to negotiate the contract based on those amendments. And just wanted to be clear that the amendments themselves might be negotiated beyond what is proposed, but giving us the authority to be able to negotiate from that point.
I'll move that we, uh, authorize the proposed amendments and authorize our school council to negotiate.
April, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Tara, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
Very good. And next up, we have, uh, sort of the next phase in, uh, our first preliminary determination hearing, which, um, our board president will talk to you all about what's happening here.
So the next on, uh, item on the agenda is for the board to hold a preliminary hearing on the proposed bond projects. If you're interested in speaking and here, at the hearing, please make sure you've signed up with the sign-in sheet, which should include your name and address. After a presentation by the administration, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. At the hearing, we ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and on the topic about the proposed project under consideration. This notice of the preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required and at this time I'll ask Dr. Hammack to explain the purpose of this hearing.
So pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one dot one dash twenty dash three dot one, a school corporation must hold two public hearings and adopt a resolution to preliminarily determine to issue bonds or enter a lease for a project which has a total project cost in excess of certain thresholds. These public hearings and the future consideration of resolutions are the very beginning of the legal process. We note that no board action is legally required at this hearing, rather, this hearing is solely to hear public comment regarding the project.
We will now hear from Dr. Hammack about the process of determining and communicating the projects to the community and the need for the projects.
Under Indiana law, whenever a school corporation proposes to construct or renovate a school building at a cost in excess of one million dollars, it must first hold a public hearing. The proofs of publication of the notice of the hearing have been issued. The projects being proposed are rooted in a critical need to address deferred maintenance across several of us, of our school facilities. Over the years, due to limited funding, certain building needs such as roofing, HVAC systems, plumbing and other infrastructure, just heard, uh, paving, uh, asphalt, have been delayed. The purpose of this project is to provide an improved educational environment for students. The process of determining these projects began with a comprehensive facilities assessment, followed by input from building leaders, maintenance staff and district leadership. And then we prioritize projects that impact health, safety, efficiency and long-term operational viability. You'll hear from me.
We will now hear from Dr. Hammack.
Yes.
About the proposed projects meets and the needs just as described.
So the list of proposed projects includes essential improvements across multiple buildings, all focused on addressing deferred maintenance and aging infrastructure. Key projects will include roof replacements at several school sites to prevent water infiltration and protect instructional spaces, HVAC system upgrades to ensure reliable heating and cooling, improve air quality and enhance energy efficiency, plumbing and electrical updates to bring aging systems up to current standards and reduce the risk of system failure. And interior improvements in high-traffic student areas to support a clean, safe and welcoming environment. These projects were prioritized based on urgency, long-term value and align, alignment with our district's commitment to maintaining safe, effective learning environments. These projects are deferred in nature.
We will now hear from Dr. Hammack about how the proposed project will be financed, as well as information about the effect on the typical property taxpayer.
The board members have been presented with an analysis of the financial impact of these projects. The estimated hard and soft costs of the project are nine million, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars with estimated costs of issuance, including capitalized interest, less interest earnings and interim lease rental of one million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, resulting in total estimated project cost of eleven million, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The estimated eleven million, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars will be funded with an anticipated gross impact on the debt service fund tax rate of point four three six six per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation, based on an estimated six hundred and eighty-seven, every time I do it wrong, million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollar assessed valuation, beginning in twenty twenty-six. However, based upon current tax and assessed valuation assumptions, as existing obligations mature, the anticipated net increase to the debt service fund tax rate is expected to be zero cents above the current rate.
We will now open the public hearing. Remember, if you'd like to speak, please sign in with the sheet which is located with Ms. Alfred. No one signed it? Okay. Please note that this is just the first step in the legal process. Again, no board action is legally required at this hearing. Rather, this hearing is solely a public, solely to hear public comment. The board will continue to work with the administration and its professionals to look for the efficiencies and conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. The board will hold a second public hearing in this boardroom on August twelfth, twenty twenty-five at six P.M.
That concludes the hearing. And that's all that we have.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from June third, twenty twenty-five?
I'll, I'll motion that we approve the minutes in place for June twenty twenty-five.
April M, second. Janice on both, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Uh, can I get a motion to approve the fundraiser, fundraisers actually? Janice? Brian, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Uh, committee and community reports, any, any?
I have a couple.
Okay.
So, uh, for Central Nine, um, kind of a busy timeframe. We've had two meetings since we last met. So a number of things have occurred. Um, the, uh, the first being, um, that, uh, we reorganized as a board for Central Nine. Um, so we've got new officers, uh, picked out for the board and, uh, we also have renewed, uh, Dr. Kovach's, uh, contract. Uh, it's been a long time standing and actually just barely squeaked by because it was interrupted in, in the process. I think, uh, everything is, is getting prepared for this new, uh, the new school year. Um, we've, we've been, uh, looking forward to starting the same day as, as our, our schools. There is a challenge though, that's not related to the high school education, but the adult education that we found from last year's, um, uh, audit, um, from the State Board of Accounts. Uh, just to summarize, um, the adult education program had been pulling from accounts that were already spent for years and were applying them to costs. And at the end of each year, the sort of, uh, awarded grant money was sent back to the state. So there is a deficit that needs to be made up and, uh, we're looking at, in understanding the problem more and then coming up with some solutions on how these accounts can be repaid or what our, you know, our approach will, is going to be for it, uh, for the adult education side only. Since then, more safeguards have been put into place in terms of, in terms of oversight and audits that are occurring regularly internally. Uh, but we're looking at, uh, you know, ways to figure out how to, to close these things out and zero out the, the dollar amount. The dollar amount is quite significant, it's nearly seven hundred thousand dollars. So it's a significant amount of money over the course of several years. So wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of that. Um, if any, have any questions, I'll be happy to forward them on and we can figure that out. One other positive thing, because I don't want to end it there, uh, I did, I did receive a lot of praise for how these meetings are recorded for Tim, um, from Dr. Kovach. He actually wants to implement something very similar. He's trying to understand more about it, probably aware, but, uh, he says we do a great job of recording our meetings here and wants to come up with that now that there is a law for us to do so. I found out the last meeting was recorded after the meeting. There was an iPad in, in the corner of the room recording us.
Doing the best that he could.
Had no idea, so anyway, um, there, there we go. Uh, that was S- Central Nine.
As far as RDC goes, I was stuck at work, missed last month's meeting, but I do know they are moving forward with a comprehensive plan. Uh, still working with REA and in fact, REA just sent over the comprehensive plan within the last couple of weeks and we've been reviewing it and I imagine that's going to be the topic for Thursday night's meeting. So hopefully I've got something local for you next month. Any other? Board member superintendent success stories, anyone?
We had a nice turnout for the state of the schools. Thank you. For those I know with work schedules, it's impossible for you all to be there, but, um, we got some really nice feedback on the presentation of our strategic plan. Just wanted you to know that the updated document at your table, um, you'll recall that the draft version that you saw in the last month had an error, pretty substantial. Uh, so this has all been cleaned up and everything is looking great. Um, we have worked with our, uh, graphic designer and we will be issuing a mailing, um, so that our community can, um, enjoy, uh, our strategic plan, uh, in color and all funded thankfully through the Lilly Endowment. So being able to fund that mailing, which is extraordinary. We're so grateful.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Janice? Tara, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose? They're adjourned at six forty-eight P.M.
Wonderful.